And welcome. Steve Martin, I'm the city administrator from Monroe. And many other things this council will tell you. But one of them is the planning person for the city. And so it's really wonderful to see a lot of our planning commission here tonight. Most of our council in our system, the council and the planning commission have roles in in our decision making process. So it isn't just one or the other. And we're also trying to make that better as we go along. So tonight, this has got great opportunity for everyone to have a talk to each other. Learn from each other. For me to learn from you as well. And I think we'll start off by introducing the folks around the table. And I'll start over here with the councillor Winter. One of our folks councillor Williams, Commissioner Strand, councillor Rich, Mayor Dan Sheets, Commission Vice Chair Tim Eastridge, Council President Jeanne Cuperson, Commission Chair Brett Cutherson, Councillor Myers and Councillor Linder. These are our folks that lead the city and you know, I don't say they keep me me out of trouble, but at least at least they're highly supportive. I know that's Mr. Stan Solot who attends many of our meetings, has been on council, has been on the planning commission, or at least the planning commission anyway. And part of our economic development committee. And I'll start with Petra, who I knew from way back when at the council of governments, many, many, many years ago. And as we go around the room, I know that some of the planning folks of the Benton County Commission represent all of Benton County. It'd be great if you let the folks know where you you live and how you represent. So it'd be great. So Patreon, let's start off with you.
Thank you. Petra Sheets, Mayor of Planning Director of Benton County.
Good morning. Sarah. So I'm going to like to be a voice for rural communities that we can. We're pretty reach out.
I'm Ray Hayman and I live at other in Benton County and North Alb.
Good evening, everybody. Karen Visco, I represent the volunteer of Benton County.
Hello, everyone. I'm John Wilson. I represent from Dare Village in the north part of the county.
I'm Liz Irish and I represent for Ellis.
Hi, I'm Ed Horford. Can you do not Nick Fowler and I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission and I am sandwiched between the Dare Village and North Albany, both of which are growing very, very rapidly. And I live in a resource zone on exclusive property.
I'm Evelyn Lee and I live here on Alpine Road.
Thank you. I'll mention that I started off my life. My dad was an Air Force officer at the Air Force Station. So I lived at fifty one seventy one Lamont. This I think the house is the little duplex is still there. Ended up actually building a house in Mountain View Drive and lived there for many years with family moving into Corvallis. So although I've been down wonderful Monroe, having passed through it for many, many years. It's neat to see the diversity and the county and how much it's grown in 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 the years that I've been here in this area. With that introductions, I would like to pass it on to the Benton County Commission Chair Nick Fowler.
Well, thank you very much. I hope no one minds if I use given as opposed to titles and surnames. This is rather than a public hearing, maybe we can be a little more informal this evening. So if you don't mind being addressed by Steve, thank you.
More than happy.
And thank you, everyone, for having us here in Monroe. We're very pleased to be here. And our goals are essentially one of let's get a dialogue. We have a set of strategic priorities within the planning commissions that I'll share with you on the next slide. But this is one of them, which is county outreach and communications. And we've gotten feedback directly from areas of the county that some areas of the county don't feel like they've been included in all the conversations. And our planning commission meetings are typically held at county headquarters on Research Avenue in Corvallis. So it feels like everything is Corvallis centric. Can't you get out into community? And that's exactly what we've taken on as one of our our goals. We didn't want to come empty handed. But so we will, in fact, share with you some of our long term priorities. But more importantly, we'll solicit feedback on the long term those goals and priorities. But the most important objective that we have for this evening is simply to listen. We do want to listen to the community and get a better context for what the county is doing specifically around land use, but perhaps more broadly. That we can incorporate into our future deliberations. So let me share with you from a planning commission standpoint for the county, what long term priorities and goals that we look at and are striving to work on. We're all volunteers and so we don't have unlimited time. We almost have unlimited goals. So through through feedback and discussion and interests, we've narrowed down our goals to these, all of which we hope to have some energy and activity around during the consistently during the year. The first of which is training and continuing education. We as volunteers do want to understand exactly how best to do our mission. And our mission in the commission is to advise the Benton County Board of Commissioners on legislative action that pertain to land use, to have judicial hearings on land use actions that are within our jurisdiction. And as a third element of that stool of responsibilities is in fact, community outreach. It's a citizen engagement or citizen involvement. We see and take that that role seriously. And this is our first of our community outreach beyond the city of Corvallis. I'll make an apology ahead of time that being the first, it may not be perfectly choreographed amongst our speakers. We'll be we'll do our best. We call it launch and learn. We thought it'd be better to to launch and learn from this activity so that the subject ones can be improved upon us. We do it through the process of visiting every corner of the of the county. And so their countywide engagement is exactly that. If we want to engage the entire county, we're looking forward to the rest of the evening. Solid waste management comes as no surprise to anyone in the county. Sorry, did I miss a question? It was spurred by two and a half years ago, the application from Republic Services to expand the operations at Cop and Butte. But that turned out to be a good fraud that our solid waste management is not just the landfill. It's managing all of our solid waste and not all of it needs to go into a landfill. And so the county has stood up a solid waste or solid waste management plan group. And the planning commission is a part of that planning group. And you'll see much more from that as we go forward. Housing affordability and availability. The county is growing quickly and we see that impact every single day in terms of our transportation infrastructure, the number of people going in and out of our communities for purposes of employment. And the consistent observation is that homes are not affordable and they're not available. And you'll hear more about that later this evening. The planning commission has stood up a subcommittee specifically on regional housing. And so that is a distinct topic that we'll share with you a little bit later on. The next three, we've kind of bundled together because the county growth has had impact on transportation. More and more homes are in areas of wildfire risk, especially this area is an area that has some wildfire risk and this area already has a community wildfire protection plan. Thanks very much Evelyn for your work on the the updated plans. But it also has an impact on recreation that the county grows in population, more and more people are exploring and using the natural resources we have in our forests. So we've coupled all of these together, these three elements together. And we're hoping to have discussions on this this particular area of transportation, recreation and wildfire fire resilience and safety. The final couple of two there, the ones in kind of that magenta are also coupled together. We have an objective to make our decisions based on objective data. And we found many times that we strive and we really desire for more data than we have available to us. And the first place we want to try and get more data is around the topic of water availability and quality. So as we again accommodate more growth in the county, we know that one of the constraining factors is the factor of water. So we've coupled these together and we've begun a series of roughly quarterly working sessions with the Benton County Board of Commissioners on this. This is our topic that the planning commission and the board of commissioners are working on jointly. And then the final one on our list is telecommunications telecommunications planning. And that's to accommodate not only cellular networks, but access to broadband internet. So those are our long term priorities and goals where we are focused. And we'll look forward to some feedback throughout the evening. And what I'd like to do now is begin this little coordination of choreography and we'll do some tag teaming here on some of these and starting with Petra and the the community development goals and priorities.
Sure. Thank you. So the planning commission, of course, like your commission surely addresses policy issues. And so that's a good summary of the policies and as staff as a planning director, we have a couple initiatives that are tangible, sort of deliverables to help start this process. And the first one I wanted to talk about was our development code update. Our countywide development code is fairly antiquated, bold and policy and just administrative updates. And so we have secured through the general fund that the county has provided us funding to contract with a contractor who has a regional expertise in development code updates. And they are going to, this contract was just executed yesterday, so hot off the press. We're going to do a keynote meeting with them sometime in the next couple of weeks where we're going to be able to co-rate some of the issues that we've identified. As well as the contractor is going to bring in a project schedule. And so this work is going to be done over the next six to nine months, maybe up to up to a year. And the goal is in this in this first phase, the development code update is not really going to be addressing policy issues. We are just going to take care of the scripters errors and the conflicts in the language that come up over years of amendments and that type of thing. So anyone has any questions about that, just wanted to share that with you. We've put together a work group and soliciting minimal outreach to the small communities, just because this is again, this isn't so much a policy process, but it's more of an administrative phase one. So and then Ray here, Commissioner Hammond is our liaison and subcommittee chair.
No, I just think we have a recognition that that policy and whole, I think, fully that it would be good interest. And the county where we are now as opposed to where we were, it's supposed to represent this recognition of that. Not for long term. See me in my places across the county, also better understand you could already said, we play a program currently now. It's amended over time. And it becomes difficult to understand sometimes because of that. We need that on a completely different point, but then starting to look more forward. Kind of issues that perhaps didn't exist when those boards were now are dominant. I think we think one, we think wildfire differently than we did here. That might have an impact. Those are the kinds of things that we're going to want to be playing input on from various communities and all this forward and developing. Policy that that better grow.
So another element deliverable from this process, comprehensive plan. And of course Monroe is familiar with the statewide planning goals and the fact that all counties and cities are responsible for developing a long range planning documents that address all of those goals. And a lot of those are identified on the screen there. And so we also have secured funding from the Department of Land Conservation and Development to develop the phase one of this periodic review, voluntary periodic review process where we'll be putting together a number of documents, refinement plans, starting with the comprehensive plan to really do a lot of that policy work, which will then be incorporated into the second phase of the development code process, right? And so that contract was just signed, was it last week or a couple of weeks ago? And Shannon Bush here is going to be our project lead for that. And just in terms of the general scope is we're going to be addressing in phase one, the first goal, which is citizen involvement. So the contractor is going to help us put together a comprehensive public outreach strategy that has a wide array of stakeholders, you know, beyond the councils and the planning commissions and really trying to get good ideas for underrepresented community members to bring them into the fold. And so as Nick was talking about the fact that it's a launch and learn, we would like to get a nice broad set of brainstorming ideas of things that we want to make sure that the contractor understands that this these communities value. And here's some local expertise on how to reach out to our respective communities. And so I really appreciate this process and your participation this evening because it will be extremely helpful when we launch into this new project. And I'll just hand over to Nick. Do you want to add anything to that?
I don't believe so. I think that's great.
Okay. And so I'll shift over to Steve, which is Shannon in the community outreach.
Ellen, much to see. Hi, everyone. My name is Shannon Bush. I'm the interim deputy director of community development. I've been helping to kind of bring this project along, the comprehensive plan update and development code project. So my role in the comprehensive plan update is to help drive the community outreach and engagement, that item C that you see here. So to give you a kind of status overview of where that stands now. Petra just mentioned, we just actually got that contract executed, I think about two weeks ago. So also very hot off the press. Our task one in that project is to define what we've called an inclusive outreach plan. So this is kind of the very early phase of us beginning to have community conversations throughout the county. We will kind of define what our interest areas are throughout the county, just a bunch of kind of little areas so that we hit the entire geography of Benton County. This is our first kind of stop along the way of these listening sessions, just kind of getting geared up. Our consultant that we will be hiring, so this is, you know, really just starting to happen now, will help us to define how that community outreach should happen. So really what we are trying to do is work with DLCD to essentially pilot a program where we can help shape a kind of future version of that goal one of the statewide land use planning goals, which is it's currently called citizen involvement. We're thinking about kind of rephrasing that into something like community involvement plan and our kind of primary goal there is to understand how can we meet each community where they're at? How can we arrive to a place where we can better receive information from you in a way that we can aggregate it, make sense of it? And I think just typically these types of meetings happen in this format. And it's not always accessible to everyone to be able to show up to this type of of a community meeting at six o'clock PM. If you have young children, let's say it can be very challenging. So we're trying to think through some of those nuances and trying to make some of our community outreach more accessible to a broad a number of constituents across the county. So that's what we'll be working on defining with our consultant going forward. And we really haven't gotten there yet. It's it's kind of very early phase right now, but we're really excited about the possibility of of what we can do, working with everyone. I think that covers it for our long range planning.
Very good. And the next item that we'd like to go into is, as you see on the priorities, was housing affordability and availability. And as I mentioned in the kind of the preface, we stood up a subcommittee to specifically focus on this issue under the leadership of Ed Horford. And Ed will give us an update on this subcommittee.
Thanks, Nick. Thanks for this opportunity to talk to Alex and me. We formed the regional housing subcommittee and try to make it not just about Benton County, but really the major one of the problems that we have in Benton County is we have, at least for Corvallis, right, twenty six thousand people can only pay almost six thousand going out. So it's not just the Corvallis problem, it's really all the surrounding areas included. To have an address. And it's it's not just the Benton County thing oriented, they've sworn, as a matter of fact, I was watching TV. There's fifty mayors around the globe, around the nation. We meet in DC and talking about the complex issues of housing, portable housing, and how we can address it above the hill. So it's not just us, it's it's a complex thing as you. So Benton County, right, we thought it was a good opportunity to not just look at it for Dallas, only the region. Thing it really has. There's broad needs possible, it's just from apartments to elderly housing and middle housing. So there's pressures everywhere. We're the second most rent burdened county in the state. One of the things that we noticed here is the school system is really the soul of our communities. And we've been seeing the old problem down, people are driving, coming in for a little bit. And as that happens, right? Teachers can't get jobs, they're having to drive from Longway and a lot of other parts as well. So some of the problems around around the community, the community starts getting older. And then school systems have problems passing bonds and so there's a lot of stress on the system. And it's complex, complex issues. And so, you know, we're here to listen to you all. I think at the very end, there's a comment, a public comment section that we've been talking about this, what you guys are going through, where your challenges are. What now? Right now, we're there's kind of three, we're six main main steps. First one is just identifying the committee and employing the subcommittee. Right now, we're in a socialization period. We'll meet with partners like HP, Good Sam, OSU, Benton County, with several of the school district. So it's still early on, obviously, we're the first city we're actually meeting with and talking to. So we're open for input, whatever is needed to focus.
So we've now been throwing things your direction for the last half an hour in terms of priorities and some of our plans and the big goals and so forth. What are your reactions and 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 so forth? Yes.
Regarding the housing affordability and availability, it's our our residents in the surrounding areas around Corvallis also invited to participate on that committee as well. It sounds like it's a lot of Corvallis specific groups like AP, OSU, the council. With somebody from Monroe or other villages, you invited to.
As a matter of fact, that's what we're doing is we're we're meeting with folks. We met with a thousand friends that we were in. Know the governor's office, we meet with a lot of people, not just in Corvallis. Corvallis has one specific thing, which is affordable workforce housing, but that's just one specific. And so again, this is part of our socialization effort going out outreach, top of the community. So absolutely. You guys are welcome.
And sorry, and who attended or helped actually be on the meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Correct. Thank you.
Yeah, one of the things that we we face here is that we have an older community, we have a small community, there's a lot of defense about, you know, we live here, we like the country, we live here, we live here. This type of living. Conversely, there's also some, you know, we like the gas station and we like, you know, you know, the supermarket, travel, which is in your route. So there's a little bit of that. So the feedback that we get in our community is, hey, we want to stay small, we don't want to be too big, but we want to, we do need growth to reach a threshold to capture the eight thousand cars passing our town every day to be able to interact with the supermarket or like testing and things like that. So with our needs are unique in every in every community, we need all the, everybody has to be. But so what we eat may not be what another city needs. So we we want to make sure our voice is understood that, you know, we are forced into a situation that doesn't agree with what that makes sense.
But I think it makes makes complete sense. And matter of fact, making it a regional thing keeps one or two communities from driving the entire either slow or fast process. So I think the unique aspect is key, right? And being able to track those and collect those from all the different communities and start setting priorities and start working on like, you can address what's willing to improve, what's quick, it's easy, what's hard, what's going to take a couple of years, but absolutely. That's the outreach, right? It's us going around and talking.
I know what John should say, we're building hundreds and hundreds of units of apartments right now, they're fast tracking. A lot of roads down there, but that's considered important. You know, all behind the grid. So how do we attract the jobs that support? And we need to support our jobs here in this community and support our first right district, which encourages, we're all, which encourages. And the system that we've been looking at is the retail on the bottom, a lot of the type of deal to be able to attach both of those, you know, address both, but also support the businesses. I think that's a technical in our community. And so we've got some unique challenges, but we are so small. And yes, you know, they're
Yeah, it's not a simple solution. So you can talk to the building savage.
And I think one thing too, just need a lot of work from Steve is, I don't know how he does it, he wears a community hat and so, and he's got a great draft on what but you know, helping, he's doing everything he can, but all any support we can get for him benefits us. We don't know, we don't know. So with the expertise from the people, I suppose, you know, Steve. He may, he may disagree, but I I see him.
As I said, this group is a very support.
Yeah, I have a question. They're regional. Can you tell us who's in that group?
Sure, sure. So instead of early on, right, the county surrounding, that's all shooting courses and letting whole area and the ones surrounding primarily. I believe we've got Lynn Green pretty, pretty solid. And Darren's working with a few others. So it's early on, but the idea is 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 regional, it's not just.
So we've valid to coast issues then too.
Yeah, because people come in and travel all the infrastructure, all of them.
And could you define the term rent burdened?
Rent burden. Yeah, I think one of the bullets was the second most rent burdened. One of the things we did, what we did talk to OSU, one of their things was they wanted national average was thirty percent of folks living on this, right? What OSU were on Corvallis was twenty two percent. And so all these students are renting all the rent. Prices are going up and then OSU wants more. On land. So yeah, there's, there's there's a lot of rent.
The rental burden is a statistic that is that is tracked, which is the percentage of disposable income that you spend on on housing.
So the highest percentage of their income would be basically used just to pay for rent, not for anything else.
So second most rent burden is is not a badge of honor, which is a way to be carried, that makes it very difficult for many, many people to live in a community that.
The first is it won't know that?
I I believe that, that's in Oregon, I I believe it is, Monroeb County, yeah, in the metroplex.
Chair Fuller, to either Shannon or which are, aren't housing needs analysis, but you know, we talked about it, it's a great call, this is that rent burden needs to number and it's a severe rent burden. I think that housing needs analysis, was there anything there of some of this next steps in process?
Do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, the inventory is definitely an important component of the company, I'm not saying, that's just the social economic background of the nation that we need to to have, to establish our own policy assessments. So yes. It will, but so that's a little bit different, though, because the cities are required by the state to have a housing needs analysis, and there's there's specific ORS and specifications for delivering those for the cities, the counties do not. But if you're part of voluntary peer activity review like we are, it's just, it's an inherent element of the larger process.
Will we be taking any consideration on the housing needs analysis that I saw my former associate wanted recently, so will we be looking at our?
Right, absolutely. So that's the kind of the complexity for counties, is that you have these unincorporated communities, you have, what, six to eight of those, and then the four as, five cities in the county. And so basically, you're going to have an overarching umbrella of policy language, and you encourage the other communities to develop unique but consistent set of policies, so that there's some continuity for the entire county. I mean, that oftentimes, the comprehensive plan at the city level is going to have that kind of umbrella document, and then have basically a chapter for each of the communities that incorporate all of those, make the connections into the, to the mother document, I guess, if that makes any sense. But that's how you maintain, again, the continuity, but that you have a unique, each chapter is going to have unique features for the needs of that, this type of community.
I have a question, it's not listed anywhere here, where does employees in industry community, or does, who's mainly that?
As in, like, economic development type of?
Doing all this requires, which means, in my book anyway, it requires industry, and for industry, it requires employees.
Right. And so this list is the planning commission long-term priority list, which is focused predominantly on the land use aspect of the puzzle. If we were to bump up to the board of commissioners' list of priorities, the economic development and ability to attack, attract and retain employees and workers and throw some jobs is one of the priorities that they have on their calendar. It's not on the planning commission calendar, but it's on the board of commissioners' calendar.
I'll also add a little tidbit to Commissioner Fowler, if that's okay. So part of the reason, one of the big reasons we do this effort for community outreach and engagement, excuse me, is to help define what's called the work program or the work plan for our comprehensive plan update. So the statewide land use planning goals are nineteen different goals, I believe only fifteen of them actually apply to Benton County, some of the others are like coastal management, so it's just not relevant to Benton County. One of the primary sort of outcomes from that community outreach, this is why we want to be very careful and intentional about doing it well, is defining community priorities. And community is a very broad word. There is no, I think, clean definition of it, it's going to vary from Monroe to Philomath to Peralas to unincorporated Benton County. But it's helping to define, I think, what you're kind of asking about, which is, I think what you're asking is having an economy to support the the sort of city, is that kind of where you're going with that in terms of like, from a land use perspective, or from a just purely economic driver? So.
I see there's two folds. Yeah. Looking at and saying, okay, you're going to do the housing, we're looking at land use, we're looking at these things, the metal quality and so forth. You can set up an entire system, and it can be absolutely great, until somebody comes in and starts talking dirty manufacturing, as opposed to clean. Somebody's out there trying to develop industry within the community to support everything. Where does that communication tie into what's happening here? That, like everything else, if industry's out here, and all of this planning is over here, it can turn out to be a disaster. So how does that communication link fit into this? If it's not being done by this, where is it being done, and how will they communicate?
It it is part of, as Shannon's mentioned, it is part of the overall community engagement because of those fifteen goals, I've forgotten the wording, of the the quality of our, I think it's water quality, and there's several others within those fifteen goals. And so within that, that community engagement and dialogue is where everything comes together under the umbrella of a comprehensive plan, so that we build a county that we all want to live in, and that we can work in as well.
Right, but the nineteen goals can be very restrictive to aspects of building, building that you, they can also be beneficial, but there are both sides of that.
If they're intended to reflect the, this is why we're doing the update, they're intended to reflect the values and desires of the community residents. And so they should reflect with this update, this update of our comprehension, comprehensive plan, they should reflect what we value within our community. And that's why we need the the engagement of our citizenry in order to define what we hold most dear within those those values. Other reactions to some of this from either the counselors, the planning commission, the administration? I think we'll get some more, but maybe we'll we'll turn over the agenda then to item number four, which is an overview of the city of Monroe's planning and development needs.
Yeah, basically, I kind of mentioned it, but but, you know, we're in the process right now, Steve, is is in the process of reviewing our, our, basically, our strategy of how we approve certain plans or development in the city, the approval process, that people come in, step one, step two, step three, we kind of, we kind of agree like that, but we also just need, like I said, support from him, is either we, you know, we do have planning, or we do have a question, you know, getting him some support through the county as far as rapidly getting the answers to that. That's been the thing that we've been, oh, back, we've gotten, unfortunately, we've had some bad advice, and some bad feelings in the community because we're not getting that support at the county level at times. And I think there've been some changes recently, and so that we're even, go back in that, but we need, we definitely need the county support. We do have, we do send a lot of, there's consistency in what we're saying in the information room. That fair, Steve, to say that?
That's fair. What Chair Cuthbertson's talking about, we have a very, our Monroe land use code, like yours, goes back in this much, much, in a way, it goes back many years, many decades, and it's been updated and changed, and a lot of those changes have to be incorporated and updated. And that process, I've learned some things, like our type one decision process, which is quite robust in the Oregon model codes, is almost non-existent in Monroe's. So basically, I guess if you're a town of a few hundred people, and the council and the commission run things, then people just come on in and do what they need to. But at this point, we need, we need that robust type one decision-making process. And also, we need to have a process for permits, for instance, if someone needs a county permit, we want to be able to work closely with the county, because we folks provide our permitting, work closely so that folks, when they come in and want to do something, come to city hall, we can provide them the basic information they need, make sure they get to the right direction, and then be able to talk to the county planners and permit posts, and then they have the authority then to issue their permits. We have a disconnect at the moment in that process. And we're working very closely to to make that better. But it's also on our side, too, a lot of discussion in the commission is about how to make that process smoother. And also, to implement these things, so we're not always having to wait a month or two before the commission and then accounts, make these happen.
That that makes me, or any other commissioners have a, but that's really our, our issue has been, we don't know, we don't know, and we get excited, something jumps before us, and they present a plan, we're excited about it, and they go, the county, we say, yeah, that's great, and all of a sudden, they're, and it's coming back, and it's not what you said, and, no, and it leaves us, you know, wondering where the disconnect is, and obviously, just to community. That's for our party.
Thank you. Put you on the spot, Shannon, and their, their community development runs a, an input morning session with contractors and several of us planning commissioners have gone, because it's, it is a great avenue to bring very specific issues into community development, specifically around the permitting and development kind of issues. And I've seen them be very, very responsive. It's also a mechanism for communication in the other direction, what programs are being implemented by community development to improve the program. So maybe I can put you on the spot.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for mentioning it. So I think what Chair Fowler is referring to is what we call CDRT, the Community Development Roundtable. That's something that we implemented last year, maybe a little bit over a year ago. It's geared toward, I mean, it's very open to anybody who would like to attend. We've kind of structured it to be geared toward people in in some form or fashion related to the development community, you know, so we have developers, engineers, realtors come, it's it's very broad stakeholders who have participated, and it's really just open dialogue. So we seek out agenda items, you know, it's kind of what is on your mind, what would you like to talk about in this meeting? Typically quarterly, we are due, we are overdue for another one of these. So I think if there's interest from the city of Monroe, we would absolutely welcome having another one coming, you know, maybe this summer. And having you kind of bring some of those concerns about communication would be fantastic. Also offer another bit of information that I think is very relevant to this conversation. We, in the county, are currently, this is yet another thing that we just kind of are starting this week, we received bids for a project that will help bring all of the different departments in the county who are involved in permitting, because it's also, I'll be very honest with you, it's complex in the county, even navigating a lot of this, there's a lot of communication that has to happen, it happens over email, it's kind of messy, it's hard to keep track of, so it's challenging for us, too, I'll admit. So this project that we have lined up is going to be working with a consultant, who has yet to be defined who that consultant is, to help us navigate this process. And I think it would be, I'll kind of lean to Rick to say, if if we can find, I'm sure that we can find a space at that table for the city of Monroe and Philomath and Derek, something we have definitely already talked about, it's not, it's not new. But I think your voices would be really valuable in that conversation, because we absolutely know that you're part of our permitting process, and you have to be sort of on board. So I think, Steve, you may kind of know that we use Acela, so we have, you know, it it works, it's kind of, it's okay, but there's a lot of room for improvement. I think it would be great to get some additional voices beyond just the county into that to help share what it's like on this kind of side of the, this other perspective. Yeah.
Related to that, would, would representatives from each of the towns be able to join those community rounds equals producing our teams? So this comes with her, I'm sure, and it was a deeper, so probably wouldn't be able to go into Peralas easily in a morning.
Yeah, so our CDRTs, we have, by intention, I'll tell you, in the past, they have only been in person, but that's, it's just because it's worked. I think if we knew that we had, excuse me, if we knew that we had additional community members who wanted to attend but couldn't, we would make it work and and, you know, kind of create a mechanism to have you join remotely. That's, yeah, we're, the county board of commissioners' offices very much set up to enable that. So it's, that's not a big problem, we just haven't had to be yet.
What's the cadence of the CRD team meetings?
Yeah, so it had been quarterly as of last year. It's kind of been a little bit on pause, actually, just because there hadn't been a whole lot of interest as of late. We had tried a couple of times to set up the next one and kind of getting response to it was a little slow. So we're, you know, trying to read the room a little bit, and it seemed like there was maybe not a whole lot of interest. But yeah, we're happy to kind of get that moving again, if that's of value to you.
I have that knowledge. Steve, it looks like you might be up.
Talk, talk about the UGB.
Oh, that next something.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that this is actually, that's actually, it's a segue there. So I learned something, I I was reading, I was looking at the, on the web, and I noticed that Walertan had done something called the UGB land swap. I was intrigued. We have, and I was intrigued because, one, I, as I've learned about Oregon planning and how incredibly complex it is, and having lived here and and gone through the early sixties and seventies, when, you know, the the cartoon was, is that you had Interstate Five go all the way around Oregon, and into California from Washington to Oregon. Come visit, but don't stay. I can't remember if that was McCall or not, but I I do remember that. So, and folks in this state do not want sprawl. I mean, that is just, that's just how it is. They do not want sprawl, they like Oregon the way it is. So having a situation where you have urban growth boundary, and urban growth boundary is, and has a housing inventory associated with it, you know, how many, a twenty-year inventory, for Monroe, that's fine, but part of what we've learned is, some of our land is not as developable, maybe as the folks that did the housing inventory may have thought. And we've learned from other developers that some of our areas are very expensive and would be. Case in point, to the northeast of us, we have the Brickyard. And for those that may not know, that's where one of the last brick factories in Oregon resided. As a matter of fact, this building in Narcity Hall made the brick from it. The Borrow Pit, which is what's the term where they pull the clay from, is still there. It's quite large, and it's about twenty acres out, eighteen acres or so in size, and it's about fourteen foot deep in the middle. And so anyone who, and it's also the only area up there that's, someone got its own GRB, which is our median density residential. The developers get very excited when they see that, until they realize that all of our infrastructure is at this end of town, there's a hundred, not now, ninety-some-year-old sewer, concrete sewer pipe that services that area, and you're going to have to truck a lot of dirt in to fill up that pit. And then this soil in this area is really not amenable to putting a lot of stuff on it. And we've been advised from a number of individuals that it's won't just be dirt packing in, there'll be a lot of other things to try and support and not have it sent in. So it's been problematic, because that is a huge part of our house. it's been problematic because that is a huge part of our housing inventory area that's just simply not going to get developed anytime soon. There's also um a riparian setback area over there. There's wetlands and there's a flood, uh, uh, the flood zone. So a lot of that property is, is not going to get developed regardless. On the southwest corner, we have our, what we call Red Hills Development, which started, um, it started to be built in the two thousand eighteen timeframe. It is now fully filled with fifty-five homes there. It's very nice. It's beautiful. Um, it also has an issue and that's the same issue we have with our soils around town regardless. In the summertime, um, I'll tell you, you could probably drop this like an asteroid somewhere in a bit, it'll just dig a deep hole. In the wintertime, it becomes mushy and telephone poles will start going this direction in the wintertime. City Hall um started sinking a few years ago. We had to get Ram Jack out to prop it up. It's problematic and everyone has water under their houses. When Red Hills was developed, I was out there because at the time, um, I was uh under contract uh to be the water operator. Still kind of am, but yeah, you're welcome. Uh, so my job at the time was to install water meters. And so I'm out there watching the construction and this is August. Hottest, driest part of, of Oregon is August. They would dig down two feet, get the foundations ready. The next morning it had two inches of water. This is August. So what we learned is, is that underneath the soil is kind of a very permeable layer and it, when, once you release that very hard topsoil, the water just oozes out. Hmm, well, that's not just there, it's everywhere. So the folks, we have the Stones, who own twenty acres just to the west of Red Hills. Another fifty acres just basically to the south and there's some more, I think across the road up on the forest area as well. We happen to have twenty acres down here that's really hard and will be hard to develop. And we have twenty acres up here, which serves two purposes. One, we have, so we have full city services to that property. The second part is, is that by not putting septic tanks and septic fields up there, we might avoid some of that and when you put those lines down, we can avoid maybe that groundwater, which we know is two feet underneath, seeping underneath the residents' homes in Red Hills, because that has been our concern. So we're thinking that this land swap, if you will, at least twenty for twenty might be a good opportunity to help the folks in our, our residents and keep them healthy and safe. At the same time, developer would certainly, if we brought it into this, if it were to be brought into the city lands and annex, would give them an opportunity to be more profitable for them to put uh a, a development with city sewer and city water. That would help our community as a, so I started reaching out to folks and I talked to Darren Nichols um last year about it. He very supportive. Um, we've talked to other folks, I think the city of um Dallas or Dayton is, is very similar and we talked with them and plus our regional um resources individual who helped with that. Um, Pat Hair, of course, has been in Dare Village, has been very much in the forefront. So I was, I love listening to his war stories. He's a he is a dynamo. Um, so my question was how? Because this is new to us. We, we've learned enough about, I think, what I just explained. But I don't know enough how to proceed, other than it's going to need your assistance as the Benton County Planning Commission. It's going to need Benton County planners and it's going to need both our council and planning commission on this side because of how our land use rules work. This entire group will be involved too. So Derek thought this would be a fantastic opportunity to share how this process might work. What are the next steps with us and how, how can we make this happen? Um, or at least start the ball rolling to make this happen. So I will, that's the presentation. I guess that I came here to learn too, so. Um, I'd be happy to, to hear any of the comments from uh the room as to how we can, we can proceed.
Pedro, I might ask you, because I know with the, my entire U G B experience is with the city of Adair where uh, one of the Benton County planners worked very closely with the city of Adair to do the entire update package and it comes to the planning commission after that entire thing has been, been done.
Right.
Uh, and so it's really what you're talking about is the, the analysis and preparation of the, of their work.
Right, exactly.
So maybe Pedro, I could ask you to
Steve's right, and even though it's rare, it's, it is a thing, a, a legally defensible thing to do. The first thing that you need to do is to amend your organization study or uh create an organization study that basically gets on paper the things that you just shared with the group, um, the geology, um, the uh density requirements, the flood finance test. So you look at the restrictions and you get that on paper. Go through a process, um, in consultation with the Department of Land Conservation and Development. They need to acknowledge that plan and if that's the case, then you would simply file a legislative amendment for yourselves um, to make that policy change. And that too then would need to be acknowledged by the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And then within one year of that acknowledgement, you need to be able to implement that into your zoning map and into the text of your uh comprehensive planning documents. So I mean, that's, that's a simple summary of the steps. But those are the legal steps.
Can we have um, maybe, maybe the can, not can, would we be able to uh, some assistance from Benton County with this?
I think, you know, obviously as Peter said, this is I think that we obviously I think we have to obviously assess our but certainly hopefully that was conversations.
Thank you. And I would not say as a necessarily contract planning. Um, it's more along the lines of, of the assistance necessary to know how to take those steps, the outline, the summary uh, that Pedro uh gave us, you know, how, how to actually put that forth. So I know Pat Deppa, I think, did quite a bit of work for uh, Dare Village in that respect. Um, I think there's a lot of work that can be looked at. I mean, we certainly do the same thing. We don't always reinvent the wheel. We look at other folks' work and then adapt it for our needs. But we would need some guidance, I guess, maybe not assistance.
And I, you may, I may not be familiar, but um, D L C D, among other estate agencies, are technical uh, grants or spending grants. It's, it's um inexpensive money because they're pretty straightforward. Um, so you can put the vast majority of those resources towards the task at hand, right? Uh, so I could absolutely help you navigate that. I mean, if you wanted to have an opportunity to hire a land use consultant just to, to do it for you.
Yes.
Um, uh, and so yes, and then, you know, you have further conversations about um what the county's capacity is by the distance as well. Uh, but uh, you know, I have a full list of those uh funding opportunities for, for these types of um, policy adjustments or legislative processes that I can get to you without, you know, any effort.
Well, stop by on my way down here. Perfect, thank you.
Next is public comment. And I don't know how we all work, but I, I looked like everybody signed in, but I don't know this. They knew they were signing in for comments or so by show of hands, how many people here did want to make a public comment?
And I think that goes along with some, a question I had, which we might have a public comment to speak to. Um, with this plan, will there be opportunities for the residents to weigh in on this? I speak for Red Hills and we have a lot of concerns um regarding this, the potential of what this would do. I think when we purchased our homes along the urban growth boundary, I don't think we thought that there would be um further development. Um, when I joined the planning commission, a lot of the focus that I understood was to um build based on our current capacity, filling in the density. And so there's been a little bit of a shift and I think there's definitely some concern. Um, some of the people in my neighborhood had this reached out about. So I just wanted to make sure that that's going to be something that is not just pushed through.
No, and uh, a well-done organization study, I just had an amendment to one, it needs to have a progress of a process. So anybody who's going to be affected should be invited to all of the public. And then that's not just the first swipe. The second one is that if there's been a document organization study and you decide to go through the legislative land use process to make an amendment, um, then that also has that process judicial and then legislative component, um, where uh the planning commission, there's opportunities for everyone in the public to comment um, on the findings and the criteria and the conclusions that, that consultants or whoever it comes to. Um, and then, you know, if that were to be, and then it goes to the next level, which is then the city council, uh, will take a look at it. And we have yet another opportunity uh for public comments, um, because of everything else that you've heard up to that point. So that's an iterative um public outreach process that everyone in the community should be aware of.
Chairman Allen, I just wanted to interrupt and add that Pedro's comments that as a resident of Adair Village, where we just completed our U G B. Um, there were multiple opportunities for the community, members of the community, and I was just one member of the community. And from those who were just outside of the um proposed U G B area that had an opportunity to provide comment, both written and in person. Some of it was happening during uh the early part of COVID, so um, a lot of meetings were done online, but they did manage to uh, to meet the uh, the public comment requirements, I mean, who were involved. And I think that a lot of different voices were heard uh during that process. And so I was, I was impressed with the with the quantity and quality of voices that were speaking to that expansion.
And I'll speak to that as well. I was part of the planning vision for that U G B expansion and we bought some meetings. Um, and they were online, they were in person, um, it was super friendly process. So I, I mean, hopefully.
I too am a resident of Red Hills and I can say, like, my opinion is that there are people who are encouraging and looking forward to the possibility of the U G B within Red Hills. There are some concerns um that I won't go into detail here, but I think not everybody maybe shares your sentiment. There are some people and some residents who are um, looking forward to that as well. So it would be interesting to see how this process sets out, how we move forward and to get opinions from both sides of the table.
I'll just make an aside, um, which is quite interesting, because I was here in the sixteen seventeen timeframe when as with Red Hills in, had to go through all the processes that Pedro and um a lot of you folks in, in Monroe were not happy with their town being grown. So it's kind of fun in a way and I mean that in, in a, in a very positive sense uh, that uh, we still have opportunity from same folks to, to provide public comment. Uh, because it is an iterative process. It's not exactly as clean, I think, at times as everyone wants it to be. Um, uh, but in the end, the use is good.
Okay, so why don't we start on? And we'll start with you. You have a public comment you're gonna.
It's, it's a comment, yeah. My question, my question, I've heard of the Riverside District Plan and I'd like to know um, if there are ways that if we move that the county can, we have any assistance and what kind of a priority that has.
And what, what plan, what, it's called the Riverside District Plan, which is an overlay of, of um, it's, you know, I visualize it and the overlay for development of the downtown area of the commercial and residential district
that emphasizes a diverse approach uh toward housing and commercial development.
Right, kind of an excuse is what we're looking at, being able to, you guys long time Red Hill or very user-friendly access to, particularly a bridge over the park and a bunch of other things. Uh, kind of a, when you're driving by, you can stop and then stay in it. Support with economic development and also provide, uh, you know, some of that housing that's needed as well. So kind of a that's kind of what we're looking at is kind of that zone, you know, Sixth Street over to the park, basically. My personal is in the town, so kind of keep you on that whole thing, kind of that. Yeah, yeah, segregation for locals, just.
You see the park on the north side of town, so how many are?
There, there's, we have one over this, over the river, which is really difficult. You have to go over ninety-nine bridge to get over to the park. And so it's a beautiful park, but and we've got a great bathroom and cover, all that, baseball field, really, there'll be dog park, but it's, but the accessibility is going for.
Yeah, you almost
You gotta send your kids and rush our traffic over, you know, under the wall to go to the park. So it's kind of you know, how do we, how do we change that so we're kind of safe? And uh, we have some ideas that are trying.
My comment, I, I know that Dare Village has tried new mixed-use zoning as well with commerce and then living above. It may be, uh, I don't know, uh, opportunistic to work alongside of Pat Hair at the same time. And he's going through that process as well. Um, and kind of see what they're doing there. I don't, it's not the little bridge unfortunately. But he is doing that mixed-use zoning and, and if you're fit to do it at the same time, then maybe you're really in a mixed-use time to do that together. Um, I mean, I'm volunteering, Pat, talking about it. Uh, but you know, he did the U G B process and he was just stellar through that whole thing and he's on his game. Um, but that might be a nice partnership in addition to whatever you can come in order to.
Just to add to that, that this coming, they, their city council meets this coming Tuesday, um, first Tuesday in the month. Uh, and they will be, I, it's my understanding that the consultant that provided or developed charrettes for them of the possible signs for this downtown mixed-use area is going to be providing I don't know that they would consider them final charrette designs, but they will be presenting them. But Pat can make those probably available to you. Um, as, as guideposts to how the there is a good sink. And some of the proposals that the consultants provide then, this is a beast for a conversation, and then there.
So my understanding is that Monroe is in the position of already having the overlay and the plan, people implementing the plan, that means.
Yeah, and I think we're, we're looking at updating the zoning at some point as well, just.
If the zoning piece is what we're, yeah. Am I, am I correct in asking you the zoning component the most?
So the zoning uh component that we're looking at, we're looking at two areas. One is how do we, we some, some parts of our town um, make it higher density. Um, the downtown core is essentially um, the overlay takes care of with part of the downtown core. Then we're going to expand our commercial section of, well, of Commercial Street. Um, so that, or city hall and the fire department to that area right there. Make that commercial zone as well. Um, downtown core area really, I think, comes to uh some of the earlier comments of you know, ODOT tells us we have a three thousand U G B, how to get ten percent of those to stop. And right now, um, folks, there's, then, so there has been effort to try and get uh, what we call um our fertilizer plant out here, um, the former Lurales property uh, to get some folks in there to do that. That's been part of the developers, the people that own the property are trying, but no one at this particular point in time wants to pull the trigger and come to downtown Monroe. We do have some very good things that people want to do. Um, for instance, we have Christmas Junction. That's actually a very I mean, it may seem unusual. They have Christmas in Monroe year round, but uh their owner um believe, Miss DeCrosen believes that she's doing quite well uh there and has, has good business. That's also a mixed use that has residential life and, and uh, this is below. Uh, there's a building right next to it, uh, this night wishing, we'd love to have someone purchase it. Uh, there's a building right next to it, uh this night wishing, we'd love to have someone purchase it, use it. But that's not happening. Across the way, the old gas station, there are apparently there are plans to use that in a kind of a small retail sense. Um, the Niestrums will uh have put the Long Timber here, also have the mineral art center and that property. Uh, the house that's right next to the Long Timber, they are wishing right now that they're in a process, they're getting a permit to tear it down. So and that's replacing it, I understand from Todd, is that they would like to put a small retail store there. So that might be the starts of the beginnings of this Riverside District. The second part is how do we get people to stop and want to go into the city. Part of that is um something that Commissioner John Bradanis, um who's an absolutely wonderful resource, is sitting in today. Um, got with that friend of one of our local groups out here, and they um were able to donate a grant money for a study uh to put a bridge over our, our pedestrian bridge, but also ahead of service vehicles and our water and waste as well, because we need to put a larger horse beam across the river. So that would give us an opportunity really at that point to get people into downtown core. Get people that are lost into our park, be able to give us a reason to expand our park and make it even more minutes than what it takes now. But kind of create that vibrant river facing view that is what the Riverside District says is first period. So I think we're at the very beginning to make that work, but it's tough. Folks need to, folks would, you know, need to come in um to create the business that we need in order to jumpstart that and make it happen.
Steve, you see water and sewer?
Yes. Right now, our water hangs off the Highway ninety nine bridge. The sewer is a six inch um pipe that was put under the river a long time ago. And um, so we have a lot of problems um at certain times of the year. And because our, our wells fall apart. This station will fill um more than I, I'm comfortable with. I don't like getting calls at court in the morning saying from the lift station. But those were, that all been part of our water and wastewater master plans. Um, the bridge is problematic. Uh, it is a fair condition bridge. It's not a and ODOT has put it on their long list of many bridges that needs to be dealt with. That is not ADA accessible as the council and the commissioner has related. Uh, it is very dangerous to cross. So this would help us, and I, and also would help this Riverside District Plan um get that focus that it was designed to do.
Steve, also, I'm checking Monroe, just receive some money for your water, you can find out there as well.
We, we did.
That can, from which will that change to making?
Um, that will, what we're hoping is that will enhance it, because one of the issues that we're going to have as we move forward with any kind of growth is this particular water plant was really designed for about a thousand, twelve hundred people. If you want to run it on a eight hour day. If we grow it, then we're going to need a little bit more push on the infrastructure side. Uh, and that's where this, this water main going across the bridge would help us. What else in two ways? One is with resilience. The second part will be able to put more water to more tanks so we can do a better job of starting. Uh, the system was designed at a time when the city was told, we will change it, we'll change it now for us. That's from O H A. So we got the plan and it worked, but um it's also a very complex plant. It's a membrane system that uh was designed to be put on the back of C one thirty in place in the back waters of Africa or Australia, and it works wonderfully. It takes the Long Tom River and creates crystal clear. Um, not without its other difficulties such as pollination, organics and other things. And that's what this money was to, to do is to add what we call sedimentation basis. Most water plants take the water and put it in the settling ponds. And then they go through a process they want to call flocculation, where they'll add alum or something else to grab onto the sediment, drop it to the bottom, and then what actually goes into the filters is very, very clean water. It's very clear, organic sediment. And therefore, all you need is filtering, disinfect it and send it off. And you have very, very few problems with disinfectant byproducts. Um, ours is not the case, it's never filled with that pre-sedimentation process, and that's what this money is for, is to help us do it.
Now, I'm on to what Steve just shared. The current system is very difficult to staff and difficult to find people who have experience and exposure to particulars of them. Um, we're lucky that we have Steve and we need to borrow Harrisburg's water guy, Harrisburg.
Yeah, he's our D R C.
Yeah.
For now, anyway. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be uh taking my tests, so. I'll add, I'll add that to my.
Yeah, it, it's just really difficult to find people who don't have the systems. So we're, we're always very grateful to Steve for everything he does for us. But we're also in a situation, we, we need to go in for you.
We, we do. And, you know, Pat, when, when the Joe Kirby was on board, he had um quarterly meetings with city managers. So it's with Pat Air and Chris Work and myself. And um, Pat, as I said, is, as you know, is a dynamo of energy. He was talking about extending his water lines from Benton County down, uh well, at the time down to Arquarium. So in that area down there. And he said, well, I want to get it to Benton County. I want to get it to droughts, you know, redundancy. And so we're talking about it, and I'm thinking, well, how about sixteen more miles down this direction? So that was the reaction, was to chuckle, that everyone stopped the moment. And Joe said, you know, that's maybe not a bad idea. Are we talking like a regional water system? And I maybe thought about, yeah, I mean, does it make sense that everyone has to go through these iterations of going to get lottery money in federal dollars every so often to replace aging and water plants, uh and everyone's pulling from sources that may or may not be um what we think they're going to be with climate change. And things are changing. We're seeing well levels drop. This is a county issue, not just a city of Monroe issue or, or uh Derek. Derek and Provalis have some wonderful water rights. Is there a way to extend those pipes just a little bit further? So that the region in South Benton um can have access to that water without having to pull from a river that you know, yes, the court engineer says from Burn Ridge is going to be there, but isn't in the long run. So we're talking those long range plans of how do we have sustainability of the water? And that was an idea that, that seemed to resonate with along with the Deer Village and.
Are you familiar with the Mindo efforts with their regional system?
Um, I heard about it. I also heard about Ewebo, so extending their water system is this, is just short of Junction City. Um, they came up that far and stopped.
I have a question. Money is a lot for your water, and is that enough? Do you think the problems are much short?
Um, at the moment, it isn't enough, we believe, to do it. I am still talking to Silver West, which is doing a work on it. Um, there are actually several elements of it, and one of the elements we're going to move ahead with our own S D Cs cover that's tank mixing. Um, one of the problems when you have um water quality, if you will, that's always disinfected by products. Uh, this affected by products, and most of us use chlorine to disinfect the water. Chlorine and organic material, this is not, you know, this is dissolved. You don't see it. The water is crystal clear, but inside has organic material. When chlorine and that organic material mix, it creates trihalomethanes and the halloacetic group, which is H A K five. All of those are regulated by the EPA. The state of Oregon is absolutely on our case because of it. They're very high because we don't have that extra process. So we're thinking of that extra process, and we think the money is going to be enough to take care of it. The other part of the recommendations, we're going to take care of ourselves more quickly. Because we believe in putting more water in our tanks, particularly during wildfire season. When I came here, we're keeping what we call, it has, the tank is thirty four feet tall. That's one million gallons. So each foot's about thirty some, thirty thousand something gallons. When I first got here, they were keeping five to eight feet in that tank. Okay, that's not even, you know, a superb million gallons of water. It's not even one fourth. And that was to keep enough turns to keep that water moving so that that water couldn't sit and create those disinfectant byproducts. If you have a fire, if you have a drought, if you have a situation where our water intake goes away um and you might have three or four days at that level, we've run out of water. So we have to put more water at the tank for all those bright reasons. To do that, we're to put a mix screen. We do some other things that will keep the churn and keep it going, and it'll dissipate the most of that out of the system. So we're going to use our S D C. So with the S D C monies and with what we got from the lottery funds from Representative Donberg and their sheets, we're going to be able to get that pre-sedimentation.
Does that still make it so you only have the Harrisburg gentleman himself able to maintain the system?
Well, with, with this upgrade, what we're, the reason why we're still a little bit in discussion is because one of the recommendations was to not use membranes anymore. Was using a little bit more conventional system or sand, sand, basic sand filters. We have a swimming pool, sand filter, this is, this is the city size versions uh of it. It still requires a grade two water operator function, and it's just the way it is. I wish the state of Oregon would change a little bit of that. But a grade two water operator needs three years of experience. And finding someone to come to Monroe to spend three years of their time, what are they going to do after they did their grade two? We're gonna look at Provalis, or Eugene, for all of them, if you're not mistaken. It takes a very long time, and that way we have to have someone experienced here to train them. So we're exploring those options, and it may be that we have to contract that John. And that, that is unfortunate. It would be nice to not be what they have to do. It is a difficult, it's a difficult task to, to try to balance all those needs.
Steve, the funding that you have and what we're doing with it, does that allow for growth, or does that just maintain that where we're at or trying to make growth?
I believe it will allow for better growth. In other words, it, it would allow us to expand easier. Okay, uh and be, and allow it to expand and also be more sustainable in that expansion. So I can buy more modules. They're only, only about half million dollars. I have two of them right now. I can buy a third. Um, I'm limited to three hundred and fifty gallons a minute from Long Tomber. However, that's a lot of water. Um, we're only using nineteen percent of that.
So the city can grow.
Right. And what we would do is you just simply would, it's, it's more modular and and it's sustainable, because even though you may need a grade two water operator, and it can accept it, or simply. What I have right now, I, in one of my former lives, I was a coast guard air policeman, a flight mechanic. And I, this system is, I just, I love it. It's just like working on the hills, it's way better. The problem with that is, is that you're not compliant with any helicopter mechanics, so you become more of a Monroe's model. So having something that's simpler is more sustainable in the long run. That's what we're trying to help make those decisions. So what is sustainable for Monroe now, what is sustainable for Monroe twenty years from now? And twenty years from now, if Monroe does fill out its housing inventory within the existing urban boundary, regardless you know, the land swap doesn't change our road boundary, it's just squeezing into the two base. We're trading twenty acres from one end to twenty acres of the other. Um, it's not causing us to grow. We're just simply trading land that's more developed or something that's less developed. But the question would be, what happens if we do the law? What if we do all of a sudden have a town of five thousand Harrisburg size now? Well, at that point, the water plant could expand, but we would be bumping up against that three hundred and fifty gallons a minute. So we might be overspent. You know, Monroe become the next Portland? I don't think so. Water would be a limiting, huge limiting factor.
Steve, what are your current water rights? Where are you sitting at? Are you bumping up against to the water rates you have right now?
No, we are not. We're at, we're, we're, we're at nineteen and a half percent. That's what I gave, I have to re-report that any.
Of your water rights?
Right, water rights. How much water we've used, and it runs about nineteen and a half percent of the total we could use.
I think the concern with the water rights is that it's, it's reliant on the river and, and on the uh the bridge.
And upstream.
And them having water to supply and keep at a level that we can draw from.
And it's the long time.
So it's not that we can't.
Upstream of you.
We do not have priority. So, so one of the other things that's happening right now as well is the, we're in the middle of a feasibility study we just completed with the court engineers. It's called eleven thirty five. They call section eleven thirty five for habitat restoration. Um, so we just call eleven thirty five project. But this involves removal of the drop structure, the dam. Um, so you can say it's the dam project, right? But it's a removal of the drop structure here. That drop structure has been there for a very long time. I mean, it's just grown. I mean, when the court engineers rechanalized the Long Tom River from Burn Bridge to Monroe, they basically built um, they bypassed all the outposts. So it's really kind of a muddy bottom. Little, very fast, is designed to move a lot of water very, very quickly, is what it's designed to do. So these drop structures were designed to slow the water up a little bit, so it wouldn't erode these brand new banks that they had. They believe in this area, they can, this would be a perfect opportunity to remove the dam, restore the banks and things where it's supposed to. Do that, though, our water level, our water intake sits into that pool of water. So when we move it, we have to um redo the water intake system. So now it has to be more like an, what they call infiltration gun. Something that kind of sits under the river. Water comes in, but now that Long Tom's not going to be this big pool of water anymore. It's going to be more like a natural, small stream in the summertime. Still kind of a roaring spring in the winter time, but we have to be able to pour water. Now, the court believes that they can sustain enough water coming down at thirty five gallons a minute. That's what they believe they can do. Um, thirty five cubic feet per second, excuse me. So, yeah, which would help us in sustain our, our, our water. But we would have to build a new system, which is part of the plans of this project. So the Long Tom Watershed Council, who's been working very closely with us um has, has secured grants that was had. So the city doesn't, is not going to have the money. The question long term for us is, even with that, is it sustainable?
My previous, my previous job, um Public Works Director in the city of Silverton. So about four years ago, we were working the exact same issue with our primary surface water on um the apple hall. You might want to, they're a couple of years ahead of you, so you might want to contact the city of Silverton, Travis Spurley over there to see if they um actually evolved through with their um intake, their.
Thank you, I will.
Yeah. They're doing the same work, they're doing the same funding.
Thank you. Yeah, it would be very helpful at this point to understand what other cities have done. There is a consultant that has done several projects, and our D R C, our correct responsible charge, Chuck Schultz, who's the Public Works Superintendent Director for Harrisburg, um has also done this in his former lives uh on the coast where they think the small streams is successful. But I'd love to talk to a small city, see how it's done. Thank you.
Sounds like one of the things that's ending.
Where, these are very challenging for a small town, um to, because these issues are not simple issues. Um, they're very technical. Um, they require us to make decisions that we all hope we have the right decision, but we also know that um, and as Chair Cupus says, we don't know what we don't know. And so we'll be very. Thank you.
How much, sorry, how much your population or your sewer capacity?
So our sewer capacity right now is about, we, we have un-aryated facultative So what that means is we have, we have ten acres of museums out there. Um, and uh they say it flows into the first pond, which is one acre in size, which flows into the second pond, which is two acres in size. Then it goes into a line pond, which is seven acres in size before, and we, and that's where we'll store that year round. We can store that because we actually just ended discharge yesterday. We're allowed to discharge. We can store that because we actually just ended discharge yesterday. We're allowed to discharge to Long Tom River. From November first through April thirtieth. And so this year, we successfully. Got our water levels all the way down, we've all the pipes, the discharge pipes. And so we're ready to store water for, for the summer. None of these have aeration in them. They just simply use the normal aerobic processes. Um, and they're actually doing quite well. I have a family of eight little babies that just, they, their eggs are on the side. On one of our ponds. They asked me how to feed them. That's very unusual. Usually we have four to five. This family came to me in two thousand nineteen. You could watch the person go out. Very healthy ponds. We have Pacific, um, pond turtles there. Um, they're endangered. We have, uh, several families of animals, the rhythms ponds. Now, having said that, what happens if we grow too much? Well, what will happen is we'll get too much smudge in the first pond, which will then start going from aerobic to animal. That's what's. Yes, it smells. Um, so to combat that, the next level would be to put bubblers, aeration. Okay, so the next thing where we go from a faculate to we'll go to an ariated. Now, after that. You simply have to go to what they call the animal sludge digesters and things like Corvett's would have. Smaller footprint, but again, more complex machine.
How much did you grow in your current system?
Our current system, without any aeration whatsoever, about twelve hundred. With aeration, um, the estimate, uh, is twenty-three hundred. With this, with this, what the current system is, as we. Without any other changes. And I believe there are other changes that can be made that are increasingly good. Before we have.
Can you go back to Riverside? Give the Riverside plan?
Yeah, Riverside District overlay. It replaced our highway, the old highway.
Just Monroe, have you looked at it? Or do you already have, uh, in a free zone?
We have not. I mean, we have talked about it in our Economic Development Committee, um, but we have not actively pursued it.
Okay, those people that have, have a concept, leave you, you mind giving your name and?
My name is Tony Ross. I live in Red Hills and, um. A few of the phrases that Stephen's used has made me a little disheartened by even commenting because it feels like. I'm allowed to be heard and we have lots and lots of opportunities before a land swap would happen to be heard. But it doesn't sound like what people have to say would have any change on his phrase was. Make it happen. Streamline procedures. And so I feel like it's great to be heard and, and I know that people love to let your voice be heard, but. Do you take any of that into account?
I tell you, so, but those are, what, a land swap is not a type one decision. So in land use planning, there are different kinds of decisions.
But does my voice have any impact in your decision? That's what I want to know.
Well, it would, it is not for me. A type one decision is what's called an administrative decision. It's like. What I would do is say, someone wants to put a, a, a structure, accessory structure, a shed in their backyard. And they come to me and say, Steve, I'd like to put a shed in my backyard. Can I do that? And I'd say, sure. And what I'd say, ask questions. Is it under one square feet? Yes, no problem. Go, go for it. Another individual might want to put an ADU accessory dwelling in it. Well, those have a little bit more conditions to it and. I can go through that process, but it's about setbacks and going through what our land use code permits. If it doesn't permit it, then as a type one person, as an administrator, I have to bump it up to the planning commission. So at that point, so a land swap is not a type one or type two decision. It is a like clause where they call quasi judicial process. That means that all landowners have to be notified. Um, there have to be public meetings. Um, announced and you don't go before me. You go before all these folks on the state. And they're the ones that have to listen, that they're required to listen to you. Um, so in the Red Hills case, for instance, there were pages, pages, pages of public comment. Um, or anecdotes.
And they were all listening and they were all listening. Counsel and, and the commissioner is not.
Sorry, can you say that again?
Well, I said, but the, the final decision gets voted on. It, it, Steve is not part of the final decision of any of it. It's. The council and the commissioners that, so we listen to the public comment and take that into account.
Your elected officials.
Only elected officials.
Yes. But we take all, that's why we have public comment and stuff is because, you know, we take that into account when we try to, you know. Make decisions. A lot of times there's not a whole ton of participation for, for most of the meetings, but. If people say, you know, like, uh, come or want to come and, and make their voice heard. I mean, we do use that to decide if. If it's a good idea or not to live with anything that we have to.
And then you try to go back to the land swap, back to the water, um. Is there an actual, uh, like number of homes limit on how much water we can provide?
The li- the limit would be, but because we get three hundred and fifty gallons per.
Well, let's just say we have seven hundred and twenty-three homes right now using nineteen and a half percent of our water allocation. So if, so if you took that and say, well, that's approximately one fifth of our water allocation that we can get from Long Tom. Multiply by times seven hundred and twenty-three, that would be a population of thirty-five hundred, thirty-four thousand people.
Is it seven hundred and thirteen people or seven hundred and?
No, uh, well, yeah, it's not housing.
No, it's not housing. So, uh, we, right now, right now.
Then were we on a restriction over the summer? So it's our, we have enough water. It's our equipment can't get the water up.
Our issue this summer was, was an, an issue with, with the equipment that had, yes, was not an issue with amount of water.
There was a failure on one of the, I believe, there was a failure on one of the skids. So we were only operating at fifty percent, uh, until they got that part to be able to replace it. So that's why we were on the restrictions that we couldn't filter, uh, enough, you know, as much water.
It was another, from an abundance, uh, uh, an abundance of caution, not that I couldn't run the other cell along my, along the pipeline. Um, right, right now, we just basically, I, like today, our run today was, uh, five hours. From start to finish. Um, that's all I needed to run. The summertime, when irrigation comes, only to run at eight to nine hours, both, both cells. Um, and if we had more homes, I'd have to run the plant all my home. I'd have, it, it's not an issue of water. It's an issue of. How many people in the entire, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, because we only have so much staff time, so they can only run the plant for so many hours before.
But if we had a larger tax base, then yes, we would be able to hire more people.
Larger tax base?
Yes, the tax base comes when you have malls, because the city. Has to pay for this through those water rates and through those taxes that receives on property taxes. We have nothing else. So. Um, that's the only way we can pay for it.
Thank you for sharing all that. It's just a lot going around at one time.
No, it is. And, and I, I think, and I'll just reiterate that it does go before your elected officials. Um, for any of those kind of, a land swap is huge. Um, a lot of comments from the public are required. Um, and these folks will have to deliberate, come up with the best decision. My job in that role is to write staff reports. I write the report and that report goes before all these folks here, um, so that they can use that as, it's kind of like the. So all the facts, that's actually, it's fat finding, it's, um, just putting, laying everything down. And then I have to compare all that to existing land use goals and our comp plan. And those are all mashed up to the state planning books. I mean, this isn't just city Monroe, state of Oregon. As a big sentence as well, so.
And then, um, right, you mentioned that the first step was getting, um, what do you do with geological? There's like some, like actual environmental agency involved. Because, uh, you know, someone saying they dug down to be, I mean, the river water is not living in them. And so, um, do those. Geological assessments and things like that are the, those are required to happen. As a resident there, we all, um, that, but up against the field that's on through road. Um, I, I can't speak exactly, but I know the five homes in my row. Um, have all had planes with the developer because all our yards flooded. And one house flooded completely empty. And so as a result of that, our, um. Our landscape was completely dug up and drains were put all through our backyard of Prince our house. I think they added five grains into our yard, five feet down. Um, and so when it rains. You still have water coming out into the street drains four days later, a solid, solid stream of water. Um, and even with all those drains, our house is still, um, when you walk in the winter in your backyard. Your feet soaked down into your ankles. It, it's just, it is what it is. Um, so. I'm really concerned that if you would do this swap and develop that land behind us and put a whole ass of concrete in there. Um, where is that water going to go? But it's going to push out into us. And I know houses just past us that. Get our runoff. They, they're retaining ours. It didn't slip off. Like, it, it wasn't just a little bit of water, like fences completely. Resolved, you know, we have a lot of rock in our yard now as to most of the houses in our row. Um, and so I really would want that geological assessment. And then also just what is the impact on, um, all of us to add more water? Because I have checked our water reports and our numbers for those our citizens that come from. Purifying the water that naturally happen when you add those chemicals in. Um, have not decreased. And on the EPA's website, with our number reports. It suggests that anybody with any sort of condition does not need to remember water. Um, and that's the same as been since we've been here. So. Um, that concerns me to add more people in and have a grant that can cover what we have right now. You add more people than that, well, we just buy another half million dollar tank or whatever that was. Who's going to pay for that? And again, we're still not getting good water now that we're paying more than we paid last year because the raise went up. And, um, so it's just concerning to me where the money is going to come from for all this growth and. How great it will be of what this long-term vision would be. And yet the effects on the actual. Community of Monroe and the well-being of Monroe and that small town deal seems to me like it. Really is going to be impacted a lot. Um, and I, I just, I, I will come and let my voice be heard each time enough. I will be sure to come with facts and things like that, but. I just think that sometimes, um. In life, even me firstly, I get pretty tunnel minded on a shiny thing like growth or a goal. And I forget that there's a lot of other things that are being impacted along the way. And, um. You know, we, we did move out here and we are heavily involved in the community as are most of our leaders. And we want to make Monroe a better place, place, and, and we work hard to do so. So. Um, if growth is the best thing for Monroe, I, I absolutely am for it, but I just want to make sure that. We are being very careful when we make those decisions.
Agreed. I mean, I, I appreciate your, your input and your opinion. But I, I remember when we purchased our home in Red Hills estate, it was made very clear to us that that land. Had the, always had the potential to be developed and it still does. How we proceed with that is, is kind of a group input and that's really what I think is, is being asked. We can have another fifty-five unit development or we could have, you know, people on county with septic lines and larger homes. And it's just really all about how it's going to be managed.
That, that's great that you were informed of that. We were told that, um. When we moved in by the Realtor and the developer, that it was county property and it was not going. To have urban boundaries expanded that, and the planning commission was absolutely sure that the city wanted to maintain. The housing density within the current city limits, even knowing that. The brick area was what the brick area is.
Yeah.
And so we were really reassured that that area behind us was not going to be developed. By various sources, including Monroe councillors. So. I, I'm thrilled that you heard that. Um, we do not.
And it affected our decisions to not buy there. That's why we chose not to. We always knew that it wasn't going to be part of the city boundaries, but it was considered Benton County and you can still develop.
Yeah, I think that that's the thing that, that's why the discussion started with the, the land swap is not because. It's not because we were trying to expand our, our urban growth boundary. It's that there was talk that they wanted to develop. Regardless of whether they're in the, the city or not. I mean, because they're in the county, they can develop, but they are limited in a. Bigger lot sizes.
Six homes.
Yeah.
Six homes versus the potential of fifty.
And so the stones, if you do the land swap, then Monroe pays them? Or because then the stones will have just as much selling the, that property?
So it's basically the, or they will, the benefit to them is that they'd be able to develop, uh, denser than. The county, the county allows. Um, so there's a financial incentive for them. Um, but also for us, it gives. Basically, we're, we're concerned about, you know, the drain fields and stuff being put in for septic on. On those houses, uh, north of you guys in Red Hills. And so it'd be better to have. The city doesn't have a say if that land is county land versus state ground. So. That's when the discussion started about possibly doing a land swap. It's not. Because basically the discussion is that they were going to, their plan was to eventually develop that or, or, or that's what. Was being discussed. And so we can either. Help them, but also, you know, help us to make sure that it's, it's something sustainable that gets put there for. Uh, that doesn't affect the Red Hills residents.
Well, it was like about that. For sale for a long time and it didn't sell for the three point some million dollars. And then, then they read, they parceled it to look more appealing and now.
Now they're swapping.
Swapping it would be much more appealing to a developer with fifty plus homes versus.
And what about the homes that were supposed to go in on the other side of the school? That other, that other small partial.
I think that that's still in talks for developing that.
It, it is.
It was not purchased by a developer?
No, it's purchased by North Sandyam Development, which also was the. It is, does however, have, um. Wetlands, sloughs go through it. So the amount of land that they have available in there to actually develop is not as great. Though the rule, uh, in Oregon, in terms of, of water running anywhere. Is that you cannot stop it, empty it to someone's yard or anything else. It has to be able to flow the way it always does. So a developer has to do their very best job of. Getting that water channeled so that it goes from point A, in this case, through Red Hills, out into that twelve acre area between the school. That goes. And it's still there. It's very mushy, very wet out there. And so the developer is, has only two choices. One, they either build around it or two, um, they go to a land bank someplace and purchase credits. And swamp the wetlands here or wetlands somewhere else. And that's, that's also kind of a unique thing for Oregon as well. But that's their only choice and that's very expensive. And so with interest rates the way they are, that's probably not one of the. Um, just one side, we, because I heard expanding our urban growth boundary, this is, we, we cannot expand our urban growth. We cannot do that. All we can do is take part of one area and trade it for another. So if we trade the area up at Brick Yard. That area actually goes back to the county. It's not part of the city of Monroe.
Yeah.
All right. So it's not expanding. We, we can't do that. The deal CD will lock us.
Yeah, if I could throw out some things for all of us to think about. Red Hills, you've got a situation up there as you're the mayor, if you live there. From the city point of view. If the city has that stone property within the city limits, then the city is managing. If it go to the county, which the, the owners can do this, but it doesn't take anywhere and go into the county and submitting plans. If the county doesn't manage it with your knowledge of what's going on up there. You're just, you're in just as bad a shape if not working. Gonna realize, and this is something that's part of this meeting on the bureau agenda, the county. The importance of getting the county to understand the Monroe community at heart. And what's going on out here. And not just sitting in for bowels and saying, yeah, you can have your business. You can do your thing to the owners of that property, because then you do have.
Yeah, influence over that.
Yeah, you have influence if, if the city is that smart. Doesn't mean that you're in any significant and better shape, but at least it's within the city control. My concern will be, and I have personally got the city issue with county, because I live in the county, I don't live in the city. When I remodeled my house, I spent four and a half months getting this. Do that. And the last one was the, the, the last obstacle we had was the wet plant. And because of the lack of, of people at the time, this was back seven years ago. Because of the lack of people in the city, or in the county rather, it took me almost six months just to get original. To do what I was trying to do. Whereas, and I guess it wouldn't be, potentially it wouldn't be different. If I was in the city, because of their staffing issues and other things, but. It brings back that communication, that need where the county would be. Communicating with Monroe and talking and hearing the bridge, whether it's through Monroe or through the county directly. But keep in mind, I guess what I'm really trying to say is, just because it's. In fact, I'll, I'll say it this way, if it's left to the county, you still have the same potential. And in fact, could be worse because then they have to put, as I think uh. Was said earlier, they put in septic tanks, because again, it comes to a city. Now you're adding more water already, and it's going down instead of having.
Instead of you drink water from a field, it's.
Yeah, yeah. Rainwater, you get cool water.
It's gray water.
And any, any staff report that would be made for that area would. Would require extensive look at the water runoff, branch drain systems and everything. Because we would not permit, that's the whole idea. City would have control of our land.
Yeah, if the city is, may, if it's within the city limits, so you have. I happen to live on the other side of the brickyard, literally prostrated. And I have the same issue with that property ever getting developed. And I guess candidly, or not candidly, I spent a lot of money on lawyers to at least limit. The. High density aspect. There's a one time they tried putting in. Put over two, they wanted originally put in about two hundred homes. This one we already have the control. Then they come back and they wanted to put in an RV park with fourteen hundred square foot lots. The tiny ones. And for us, uh, our water level, from, we live right on the side of Longtown. And the water from Longtown and the rain is saying, comes up about fourteen feet. Just because of the, the, the landscape out there. And we only have about three feet left after that, we were in the house. The break over that or the pave over that ground or raise that pit back up. What used to be the, uh, what is the plate there? Like for it, and there's just more water come. As we get all the water off the hills, it's going straight out. But the, the important thing is, in my opinion, is the communication that must be put. Between the county and the city, with the county managed pieces. And whatever the city is doing, managing how best to grow will in the community.
I'm Angela Smith, um, Celeste Smith, and I've been frequent at this neighborhood my whole life. Or this, but this community my whole life. Um, family grew up here, I was already breaking state, I'm coming on, and now I'm back and. Ready to um, really get my hands into the community of the world. With that said, I wanna kind of take it all the way back, and I do apologize, I was a few minutes late, so you may have addressed this in your introduction. Um, I wanted to know how your initiative, talking about the long-term goals and, you know, starting this. This um launch reaching out to community, you know, can we outreach to get our feedback in what matters to us? Does it relate to, how does it relate to the effort that they improved five or six years ago for the twenty-four core values? Is it related to that? Is it um stepping off of that? What happened to that?
I can speak to that if nobody else. So I'll just quickly say that predates, I think, most of us here from the county. Um, Rick may have been there for a piece of that, but the county's twenty forty core values um. Should, that's essentially an element that would be recognized in the planning effort for the, the county cop plan. So the county cap, cop plan cannot like deviate. Um, or go in a totally different direction. So um. Those core values are really uh a sort of strategic planning initiative from the, the top and the board of commissioners to, to understand what are the core values of. Benton County at large. Um, I feel like this is not a very satisfying answer, but it's uh that, it's like a broad, just kind of like umbrella, like who are we? As, as a county, as a community, what are we, what do we value most? They're not necessarily sort of action items, you know, so they're what we strive to be and what we want our policies to sort of. Um, reflect, thank you. So uh, the comprehensive plan though, kind of is a, is a. Good mechanism for implementing some of those core values. I hope that helps to kind of contextualize.
It does, actually, we're to the county agreement.
Okay, so you might know more than some of us here.
But the reason why I ask is because there, it was such a robust effort and a lot of money was spent. To gather data, collect the data, establish committees. And bring people for the twenty-fourth implementation committee. And so how, what I wanna make sure doesn't happen. Is that the initiative is great, the idea is great. Are, how do we ensure that this data that you're collecting is going to actually produce results? Because it's a lot of money, it's a lot of effort, it's a lot of talk, and. I don't wanna see the same thing happen with whatever, because you were in special management, so the presentation. And if that didn't have any follow-through of it. Where, how would we guarantee we're gonna make follow-through here for these long-term goals and, and Monroe and this community? This community is gonna be able to maintain that communication effort, moving things forward, action items. Yeah.
I think you're bringing up a really good point of a common frustration with planning. You know, if there's not follow-through and action to, to the talk, then it's what value did it bring? So. What I would say, um. The way that a comprehensive plan's action or policy recommendations are implemented is through a development code. Typically, you know, it's like one of the most kind of basic ways, especially from a land use perspective. Um, we are, so Patriot talked a little bit earlier about the, I'm not sure if you were here for this bit, um, we talked about the development code update. So we are just starting out the phase one sort of initiative for that. So. The phase one, um, I know that these are kind of like nebulous terms, but it's basically getting in compliance with state regs that we're just kind of out of date. You know, so we're, we're kind of playing catch-up a little bit right now. Um, as our comprehensive plan project unfolds, and this is a years, truthfully, this is a years-long effort, you know, it doesn't happen overnight. It, it takes a long time because there's a lot of coordination and talking with a lot of people and aggregating information and making sense of it. Um, so after those, probably I'll say just ballpark, two to three years of sort of um outreach and, and. Data-driven exercises. Um, some of those uh. Some of the outcomes of that will be policy um implemented through the development code update. That's sort of like phase two, at least, if not possibly a phase three. So um, I hope that helps to kind of explain how we would be implementing action in some of these. Um, the outcomes of the comprehensive plan.
No, it helps. I agree with you.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll see how it works.
All right, Shadi tonight. Um, I wanted to respond to your comments um that. It was a, and I'm sorry, what did you say? Um, I, I am, I'm so sorry to hear about what. The west, the most west side of the Red Hills State experiences. I know that. I, when I walk my dogs through there every night, you seem to get dragged by the two dogs, I'm sure. There's a lot of French. French drains, there's a lot of um. Zero escaping, like uh, lots of rocks, but yeah, lots of sand and gravel. Um, and I don't at all intend to minimize that. I think that a theme in Monroe is water, it, it almost doesn't matter where in the road you live. I think, I don't mean to speak on everyone, on everyone's behalf, but whether you're in Red Hills State or you're, or San Blotthills, or maybe you're. Working on the Old City Hall, or Council Rich and I are next door neighbors, we have um. Water-related issues on our own property. I think just the nature of the geography of Monroe, it's a slope heading down toward the riverbank, uh, or the riverbed. I think probably ninety percent of people experience water-related issues at some time or another. And then. Pairing on top of that, the um, the water treatment, like water is just like this. Forever, you know, it's, it's infinite, evolving discussion. Um. So I, I hope you do come to the meetings when we start talking about it. It sounds like, well, that's great. You're always looking for more, it's like a community. Um, the other thing I wanted to say is that I completely agree that we don't just wanna develop Monroe blindly. We wanna be very strategic and intentional about it. We do need development in order to fix some of our. Um, SDCs, our system development charges, and that's part of how we're able to improve our, our infrastructure. So it's, it's a balance that we play. We don't want to just develop, we think we're helping, we, we also need to develop. And it helps address uh issues and everything. This is a, a tight one.
And I think even if we do the land swap, there's still an entire other long process, like with Red Hills, to actually. Nail down what that looks like, you know, so even if we do, do the land swap, then there's a whole planning. Uh, situation with how this community gets developed and, and working with the people who will be. You know, they're developing that land. Well, so it doesn't necessarily mean that. Uh, there's gonna be, you know, another fifty home back there, and it may be a lot less, it just depends on. I think there's a lot of, a lot of process and, and stuff that would, answers that need to be. Uh, gotten about, you know, the same thing, the um. The soils and the, you know, all that stuff as far as, you know, what it can sustain and also, you know, how much uh wetlands and. And uh, stuff like that, what needs to, you know, maintain in that lot. Without a theme, without a study being done on it, it's hard to say, you know, how much of it. I mean, right now it just looks like a grass field, but if you go walk in it, it might not be uh.
It might not be that nice turf for walking on.
I, I have a question about the land swap. If, um, if Monroe needs to grow, why can't we do both? I mean, if we're actually narrowing this whole thought down to needing homes and income, why can't we do both? The, do the field the right way and the uh brickyard. What, what's holding back if you need homes built?
I don't think anybody wants to develop the brickyard because it's just such a imminent cost for somebody to bring in. All the materials to make it develop.
Not only that, we have to have a certain percentage of your regable land. Comply before you can expand your, for the growth there.
Are assuming that once the geological survey is done. On the coons, that you're gonna have better. Land opportunities. Has there already been a survey to know that? That the building potential on that land with the water table is better than the brickyard, or are you?
I think the answer would be with the stones, because that would be something that they would have done in there.
The thing is, there's a spring on the hill above you guys. That feeds a creek. That spring is two hundred feet above the elevation of Queen Grove. Right, I mean, you're gonna get one.
I'm not arguing with you about that. I'm, I was just saying, you, both, we're, it sounds like, we, we can't, the city in Monroe needs money.
Well, the, we need homes. What, what we run into over and over again is. A developer, somebody with money, usually willing to develop it to make that happen. And the, they aren't there. They don't want to touch it, they don't wanna touch it. So. That's two, you know, four, twenty acres at fourteen feet deep to fill it up. And then do the wetlands, all that stuff. Nobody wants to touch it, they can't, nobody wants to. So. They're gonna sit, and the city will not be able to increase development. Because your land law, not because we don't have acreage, but because they're gonna build with acreage, even though that's what it's called. So we are in a situation where we got twenty acres we can't do anything with, that is hampering our ability to grow. To build those homes. So we have two choices. We can either do a land swap, or we can wait for somebody. That sees an opportunity to do something with the brickyard that has the money to do that type of thing. And so we. The, the best, we need to make the best decision for the city and for the citizens here. And so we need your input, we need everybody's input. We also need to make a good rational decision as to what needs to be done. And, and if you develop over there by Red Hills, now you can control the stormwater, you can control a lot of different things you can't do right now. So potentially, if you did that, now you're channeling all the rainwater off of the homes and out of the streets into a storm drain. And bypassing and maybe reducing some of the water that's actually going into the homes over there. But we don't know that. I'm not an engineer. But that's something that, that, you know, people off part of the mess will do and be able to, to answer.
So if, just one last, so why hasn't a developer already done that when it's not this?
You mean with that property?
Yeah.
They're limited by how many acres a home can be. I think it has to be on. You only divide it so many ways, that's our two home, that's our two zones.
One, one home per, so it could support ten homes, right?
And I think originally, they weren't, there wasn't discuss, it, it, it's only recently that there was discussion of them developing it, and that's when it. Got into our, on our radar.
Right, correct.
Because previously, it wasn't, there wasn't a discussion about it. It was just a farmer, just a A P owner.
Yeah, and when the owners passed away, the kids decided they didn't want a farm to be. That's what started the act. It gave me a little feel for the brickyard. I wanted to buy it one time. My wife and I were gonna buy it to try and prevent it from getting involved. The way it will be presented. In the process of doing my pavilions, it would have taken, at that time, this was back now, seven, roughly seven, eight years. At that time, it was almost seven million dollars to build sewer streets and fill in the ground. You get the water, the sewer, and the streets in, like you have in Red. Uh, in a very ass of new, which means you either have to put very high-end pump. Which is what we proposed, uh, with one acre, two acre, and half acre lots. Or you have to put two hundred homes at a lower price to, to rebuild. You also have to, for that property, you have to put in a uh, a. A sewer pump system.
Lifts in the lift station.
Yes, yeah, a, a separate system to pump it up because it's too far down where the financial. So you're looking at a very expensive area. And then you've got the neighbors who come around and look at it and say, what are you gonna do to my property? Because there's homes around there as well. It's, it's not an easy process and developing that, uh, the brickyard specifically. Is perhaps the most difficult. You go back up to the stone property, which has now come up for sale. And you have the, what I've already talked about, which is, do you want to be more involved and control them locally? Or do you wanna let the, the county deal in it, which potentially doesn't help you win, win a bid? Um. The Red Hill property, as I remember, was held up because of the wetland issue. And as Steve pointed out, and eventually they did a. And as Steve pointed out, and eventually they did a, a purchase of credits to get that approved, but I believe it was somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty-nine years.
Eleven.
Eleven years? Of going back and forth within the city and the county, to to figure out, you know, what are we actually going to allow them to do? But there was a lot of conversation on that one, and it, it was driven primarily by the owners of the property on the main road going in on the left-hand side. It was somebody that realized that it was wetland in that area, and it had to be mitigated from. And when the sounds of it, they didn't mitigate it.
It's wet.
Oh, yeah.
It's wet.
It, it, it's wetland. And it's, the concern I have, coming back again to the discussion with county is whatever happens, there has to be better communication and understanding on Monroe. If it's going to work between the county and Monroe. They, Monroe, the county can sit up and for ballots and tell us what's going to happen or ignore. I mean, that, that has been, I, I have heard in the twenty-four years now that will occur. Oh, the county says we're going to do that. Oh, the county said we're going to do that, or I called the county and I never get an answer. And to me, that's the most critical piece of it. Is the communication between the county and the city, and the communication between people in the city, and they just focus on the thing. If those two sets of communications don't happen, we get a good deal. And I'd probably be able to walk into
I think you said things very, very well, and you reinforced the reason that you've got so many visitors to your, uh, your hall here. Because uh this is exactly the, the value that, that we have as well. We need to understand this part of the, the county. From the planning commission standpoint, the professional staff, I'm sure they'd say the same thing within the county, professional staff, they, they benefit from having a, a better context of all corners of, of the county. Um, so this has been valuable to, to me personally. Uh, I hope it's been somewhat valued, valuable to uh all of you. Uh, we certainly appreciate the hospitality and, and hosting us uh here. You now have some names and faces uh as, as well, and we also have now names and faces that really helps to personalize the uh, the big community of Monroe.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks for making us like any bigger.